Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for March 1st, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask that you please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We requested Pastor Susan Terrell from the Emanuel United Church of Christ to do our invocation this evening. And immediately following the invocation, we will have the two scouts that are here for a badge if they can just step up and lead us in the pledge allegiance. So, Pastor.
Let us be in the spirit of prayer. Oh God, eternal Spirit, you have created us and placed us in relationship as a people. We ask again this night for your gentle guidance for decisions to be made on behalf of the people of Bartlett. So may your goodness surround this place and all those present tonight keep us ever mindful of you in word and in deed. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. And gentlemen, if you want to step up, you can just go in the middle of here somewhere if you want.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if you want to step over at the podium, just give us your name and what badge you're shooting for, so we'll give you a chance for some public speaking as well.
My name's Alex and I am working on the Citizen in the Community Badge.
Thanks, Alex.
Thomas, Citizenship in the Community Badge.
Thank you, Thomas.
My name is Jack and I'm working on the Communications Merit Badge and the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge.
Thank you, Jack. Well done, gentlemen, welcome. All right, consent agenda this evening, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be acted in one motion. There will be no additional discussion on these items. At this point, is there anything that anyone would like to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, if there are no objections, I'd like to add item number C1, the Bartlett Hills 2016 Golf Rates.
Mr. President, I'd like to add items A1 and 2.
A1 and 2.
I dot Route 59, intersection improvement agreement, we've discussed that, right? Jane Society Reimbursement Agreement, that's been discussed. Anybody have any questions that we caused to not include those in the consent? All right, I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the bills list for March 1st, 2016, and also the Item A Planning and Zoning Committee, Items A1, I dot Route 59, Route 20 Intersection Improvement Agreement, Jane Society Reimbursement Agreement, and the zoning map update. Also on the consent agenda, we will be including Finance and Golf Committee, 2016 Bartlett Hills Golf Rates.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from public hearing, board and committee minutes from February 16th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Upstein.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next item we have this evening is treasurer's report, there's none. Next, we have the Recognition Proclamation. Let me get caught up here on all of them. I'll be reading a proclamation celebrating the 125th anniversary of the Village of Bartlett's incorporation. Whereas on February 28th, 1891, a group of Bartlett men, among them Louis Stumpf, John Carr, Jacob Schmidt, August Schick, Herman Niewich, and Charles F. Schultz, got together in a room above the Bartlett Tap, platform 18 today, and voted 49 to 0 to formally create the Village of Bartlett. Whereas after the incorporation became official on March 2nd of that same year, the new village board began meeting regularly to address local concerns facing the growing community, including liquor license, sidewalks, street repairs, dog licenses, and the $83.33 which they decided was the proper amount for the contingency funds in the first village budget. And whereas because of the new community was in need of a village hall, Bartlett sage forefathers made finance appropriations a priority and agreed to purchase the land for the municipal building at a grand cost of $125. And whereas despite its growth to a current population of more than 40,000, its thriving businesses, and its many acres of parks, and despite its schools worship facilities, and always active civic organizations, you don't have to look too long or too hard to see this simple but proud village that began 125 years ago. And whereas then and now, Bartlett is a municipality that tries to anticipate the needs of its citizens and how best to meet them, then and now, it is a village that stares down its challenges and celebrates its achievements. Then and now, it's a community where people are happy to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, president of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, do hereby proclaim a very, very happy milestone birthday to the Village of Bartlett. I look back at our history and see how greatly we have surpassed our humble beginnings. I look forward to the years ahead with excitement and hope that Bartlett is and always will be a community that our residents are proud to call home, dated this first day of March 2016. And if there's no disagreement, we so shall proclaim. Next item we have in the president's report is O'Hare's Pub Restaurant Class J Liquor License. They are requesting a liquor license for a special event, and I would entertain a motion to approve their event.
So moved.
Seconded by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Danny. The clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have under our agenda this evening, does anybody from the board have any questions?
I just have one question I'd like to ask. We had touched base briefly on the intersection, and the reason it came to mind is we had it on the agenda this evening, the development that was coming in on Route 59 and 20. And it was my understanding that we were waiting on a land appraisal to see if we would move forward or what was happening with that.
Actually...
What's happening there?
We have gotten the appraisal, and we've gotten a consultant to do kind of an analysis. We've got the pro forma from the developer that he was proposing for that development, and we're waiting for the consultant to give us a verbal report on that project to see if it's feasible to work through the Tiff District with. Because as you know, some of that property is in the Tiff District, and whether it financially has the legs, so to speak, to carry through that. But we're in the midst of that, the consultant has all that, and we'll bring it back to you if it's a positive. Either way, the developer still can still proceed that if he wants to, so.
Yeah. What do you think the timeline is, next couple months, maybe?
It should, yeah, I would think, you know, in April, May.
Cool. I thank you.
Anything else? There are none. The next portion of our meeting this evening is the town hall portion of the meeting. At this point, if anyone would like to address the board, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Art Prashanik, 925 Auburn Lane in Bartlett. Three items for you tonight. First of all, I wanted to thank the Bartlett Police Department and Public Works. I had called the police department maybe in November, December. One of the residents in my neighborhood had mentioned that when they would have guests come into town and they would give them directions, they could never find Auburn Lane because the lettering was so small on that sign. So I talked to Sergeant Nada, is it, from the police department. They looked into it, and two weeks ago, they called me, they replaced the signs out there. So, it's a little bit, but it just shows you how responsive our village is to things like that, so thank you very much. Second thing is, a couple meetings ago, trustee, well, you guys were discussing the new police station, and a suggestion made by trustee Hopkins was to get more public input into this project. And I think a couple of the board members shot that down or was not very receptive to that. I, for one, think that the public should be involved in that as much as possible. We had two different versions of the village hall built many years ago, and maybe if they had used more public input into that, we would have only done it once and saved the taxpayers some money. So, please consider that. Last item...
Before you move on, I think there is going to be a hearing, right?
Yeah.
Coming up very, very shortly, yeah, so.
Beautiful. I don't know if you guys have been following matters at U-46. A couple months ago, I came here expressing my disappointment with U-46 constantly seeming to make things, you know, dealing with residents. And I had several issues with my son during high school. He's no longer there, but I continue to monitor them and go to meetings. Learned at the last meeting that there were 50 Bartlett High School students who applied for what they call PE waivers. These were gifted students who are going to go to some of the fine institutions around the country, and in order to take the classes necessary to go to those, they need to get a PE waiver so they can take these classes. Many of them have already gotten the waivers for this current year, and they've applied again for next year, and out of 50 students, 48 were turned down. And they were not given any explanation. I think I'm here tonight to tell you in person what's happened to them, but I urge the village to try to help with these matters because it is affecting our residents. People are trying to sell their houses to get away from the taxes from U-46, and they're finding out that buyers don't want to come in because of the reputation. So what U-46 does to the students and parents does affect our village. So, they will explain more, but an update, a week has gone by, and they haven't even been contacted to say what's going on with this. Now conversely, about a year ago, there was a young lady from one of the schools that went up there to complain about the grading system. The very next day, she was called into the principal's office and scolded for doing that at a board meeting. And yet, these people whose lives are dependent on going forward, they haven't heard anything. At the meeting last week, Tony Sanders said, "This is all the state's doing, we had nothing to do with it." Found out that the law did not change at all. The law is the same. Last night, at a town hall meeting hosted by a couple of the U-46 board members, one of the women who served on the CAC committee said, "Well, the real reason is that the regional school board superintendent has marked down U-46 for giving out too many PE waivers for this." Now, that was news to all of us because the students were never informed of that. So I called the superintendent of schools this morning from Kane County, and even though she was in Springfield, she returned my call, and she said, "Absolutely not. The regional board has had nothing to do with that. It's all U-46's decision on what to have with it." U-46 Bartlett High School does have more waivers than anybody else, but there might be good reasons for that. We have the gifted program there.
Yeah.
And it is Kane County with a lot of smaller schools. So, please take that into consideration. I want you to make sure you're aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prashanik. I have, I met three now of the six board members that I've met with one-on-one with that, so I'll let you know how good the other three go.
Good evening. I am Martin McManaman. I'm the highway commissioner here in Wayne Township. I'm also a resident of Bartlett. I'm here on behalf of the Wayne Township Bike Plan. The township, along with active transportation, and the residents of Wayne Township, put together a plan for the future of cycling and bike paths in the entire township. We had a lot of people work on it, people from Bartlett worked on it, people from all the towns, residents from all the towns had a say in it. I've sent a copy to all the board members. Any residents that would like to see a copy, it's on the Wayne Township website, so anybody's welcome to look at it. I'm asking that at the next board meeting, if you could put it on your agenda to vote for a resolution to endorse that plan, and that's my reason for being here tonight.
Yeah, and you know, we're just actually creating our Bike and Run Committee tonight, right?
Yeah, I see that on your agenda. I didn't know until I walked in.
It'd be good to have you guys coordinate with each other. That would be excellent.
Yeah, and I wish you luck with that, and I think this would be a big help, and I know you're in good hands with Terry Witt and the other people involved.
Thanks for sharing that with us.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah. Very professional presentation, too, that you sent out, so, well done.
Thank you.
I'm Terry Witt, 471 Southwestern Avenue. And it was very enlightening to hear in the proclamation, that in year one, the village provided for sidewalks. Here we are, 125 years later, and we're going to get a bike plan.
All right.
Excellent, excellent. So, I also happen to be the director of advocacy at Spin Doctors Cycle Works, our local bike shop. It's family-owned by Greg and Ann Marie Anderson, in our 20th year now in downtown Bartlett. So, we're proud of that, and also, we're proud that the League of American Bicycleists just issued us a Silver Certificate in their Bicycle Friendly Business Program. And in their whole Bicycle Friendly America Program, I'll just read one sentence, "A bicycle-friendly place makes bicycling safe, comfortable, and convenient for people of all ages and abilities." And then they rank states, communities, businesses, and universities. Illinois ranks number 14 amongst all the states. We've got 12 bicycle-friendly communities in the state, five of them are in DuPage County, and we have two neighboring towns that are honorable mention and will probably join the ranks the next time around. It's a worthy goal. There are 22 bicycle-friendly businesses in the state. Spin Doctors Cycle Works is one of those 22. Now, you'd think it was a slam dunk bike shop, right? Not so. I mean, there's a lot of bike shops. There's only nine members of the bicycle industry that have been recognized by the League of American Bicycleists, and Spin Doctors got the Silver Award. And out of the whole country, there's 1,100 bicycle-friendly businesses, only 384 have made it to the Silver level. So, it's quite an accomplishment. Now, the reasons I feel that Spin Doctors Cycle Works has made it there is two primary ones. Number one, Spin Doctors has a team in the Tour de Cure to fight diabetes. They are the number one fundraiser in the Chicago area with over $20,000 last year raised for Spin Doctors Cycle Works. The other thing, and the scouts might even want to think about this if you're bicycle riders, Greg always hires two to three high school students every summer. Doesn't only teach them how to build a bicycle, he teaches them a lot of things. He's a great mentor. And it's not just guys, it's also gals. He brings them into the business, and he teaches them how to become productive citizens in our community. So, I just wanted to mention, if you need a bike, it's going to get warmer next week in the Spin Doctors Cycle Works. Greg will take care of you.
All right.
Terry? I would suggest that you take that to the Chamber of Commerce so that they can distribute to the different businesses in town.
Yeah. Thank you, Terry.
Hi. My name is Ivana Bozik, and I'm a Bartlett resident for 12 years now. I'm one of the parents whose child is affected by U-46 policy changes, recent policy changes. And just to set the stage, it is correct that Illinois state law about PE exemption has not been changed at all. Law has been established in 2005 with a goal to provide all kids with PE education. So we're not against that law, we're not challenging that law in any way, and as a parent, we strongly believe in the importance of PE education in school. So that's not the problem at all. The problem is that in Bartlett Gifted Academy Program, kids can take only one elective. And having additional elective, believe it or not, makes a huge difference when kids are compared against other kids in surrounding school districts where, believe it or not, they can take up to six electives, and they can have extra additional two hours in school. So, you can appreciate how competitive the situation is. Giving them the PE waiver was something that was a routine thing over the years, as long as they could prove that elective they're taking instead of a PE is mandated by a college. As long as they bring a printed website article that says, "I'm taking French instead of PE, and my college requires four years of French," you are granted a PE waiver. I'm not sure what the new law is because they didn't publish new regulations, but based on a Facebook post from Mr. Sanders, he is alluding that he wants kids to actually apply to school, which you could appreciate is very, it's a process that requires a lot of thought. You don't want to apply to a school next week because you need a PE waiver. You build yourself, you spend the entire summer building your curriculum so you can apply to school. That's the first thing. So, we don't know what the new process is. We were told, just sent an email recently, that they're going to form the Appeal Committee that's going to consider everybody who has applied for PE waivers to reconsider. So, we hope that's going to be a positive result. One more general concern is, maybe I'm speaking only for kids who are, as a parent of a child that's in gifted education, but many PE classes are cut. So, kids are simply told, "Well, we don't have enough students to keep that PE class, so we cut that PE class." Class sizes, I understand the budget constraints and everything, and I can tell you that I'm extremely proud of Bartlett High School teachers. If you look at how much money they have per student, and if you compare them with Barrington, with San Charles, these numbers don't compare. But if you compare that with academic performance, we're still a little bit behind, but we're not that much behind. So, it seems that, actually, it's obvious that we have a group of great educators, great teachers, committed students, and we just need U-46 School District to appreciate that and support us in providing better education for our kids. I'm not sure if you have any influence over U-46, or if you can help us to voice our concerns. As a parent, I did voice my concern. It didn't make a difference, though, and we did actually contact the state of Illinois, and they essentially told us that law is left for interpretation. We can forward that documentation and correspondence. So essentially, told us that School District has all the powers. They can deny PE waivers or they can grant them. And in general, about PE education, I checked the Illinois website, and I was surprised to learn that in U-46, kids receive only 1.8 days of PE classes a week. My kids started school in Bartlett schools, and they had PE class every single day. I don't remember every single year where they did not have a PE every single day, so I'm not sure. I assume that this number is really low because of the schools where we don't have facilities to conduct PE classes, so that's why this number looks so low. And I'm sure that Mr. Sanders and U-46 Board wants to improve this number, but by cutting PE waivers for gifted kids, that's not going to change much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and I'm pretty optimistic that they'll come around.
Right there.
We'll get your address.
Sure.
Right, whichever.
Thank you. And your name, too, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ashwarya Joyce. I'm a junior at Bartlett High School, and I'd just like to begin by thank you all for your time here tonight. Now, I'm also here to speak about the PE exemptions at Bartlett High School, and I'm just going to briefly explain the situation so that you get a more holistic view of what's really going on, and then my colleague Ivana Bozik is going to come up and talk about why this really pertains to the Village of Bartlett in particular. So, as I said, I'm a junior at Bartlett, so that means that, and so with PE exemptions, only juniors and seniors are eligible to have PE exemptions. So for this year, I had the incredible opportunity of being able to take AP Psychology in place of gym. Now, don't get me wrong, I really do value and appreciate the PE program at Bartlett, and the past two teachers that I've had for my freshman, my sophomore years have been absolutely incredible. However, the classes that I'm applying for PE exemptions for are truly necessary for me to get into the colleges of my choice. For example, I would like to take AP Chemistry next year, and four years of science classes are required in order for me to get into Georgia Tech. I would also like to take Spanish Honors 7, 8, and four years of Spanish are required in order to get into the University of Iowa. I'd like to take AP World History, and that course is required in order for me to get into Indiana University Bloomington, the University of California Berkeley, and the University of Minnesota. And then, the other four classes that I plan on taking, those are all required for me to graduate from Bartlett High School with Academy honors. So, as you can see, I have pretty solid foundation, as do most of my peers, as for why I require this PE exemption. So let me just talk about the situation here. Back in November was when the process for PE, was when the process for PE exemptions started. And instantly, we knew that something was a little bit different than last year because there was newer information that was given out describing the requirements that the school had set forth for PE exemptions. And so I went to talk to an administrator, and she clearly stated that she couldn't really give me any solid or concrete information as to what would be acceptable. So there was some lack of communication. Then I submitted my PE exemption based on what I knew from the PowerPoints that the district had put up, which were quite ambiguous based on what the administrators had told me, the counselors had told me, and my teachers had told me, and based on what I applied with last year. And suddenly, one day, just a couple of weeks ago, I received a piece of paper in the middle of class, as did all of my peers, stating simply that I was denied. They provided three checkboxes for why we were denied, and all of them were equally vague. The reason why I was denied is because the courses that I had selected favor room for PE. But as I've shown you here tonight, they really did not. And most of my peers are in a similar situation. So we went to the board meeting last Monday, and we tried to voice our concerns to the board. However, the board responded with they couldn't comment on it at the moment, it was simply state law, and they would be getting back to us as soon as possible. However, their method of getting back to us was a Facebook post by Tony Sanders. And I'm sure that I'm really not the only individual here in this room tonight who believes that a Facebook post really isn't adequate when really our futures kind of hang in the balance here. And we went to the town hall, the U-46 Town Hall last night, and they also told us that they couldn't provide us with really substantial information at the time because they weren't at liberty to speak about it. However, they did tell us that we would be receiving some information by tomorrow night. And we have received some information. We've received an email that some of our parents got, and that email states that there would be an appeals committee that would be established, but that all of our new information had to be turned in by Thursday. Now, when not even every student who has applied for PE exemption received this email, this again seems like a drastic lack of communication between U-46, the students, and the parents. And now, my colleague and peer Ivana Bozik is going to speak about how this pertains to the Village of Bartlett in particular.
Could we just get the spelling of your name, please?
A-I-S-H-W-A-R-Y-A, and then my last name is J-O-I-S.
And your address?
11 Trail Ridge Court, Streamwood, Illinois. I go to Bartlett because I'm part of the academy program, so it kind of switches over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ivana Bozik of 610 Biltmore Drive here in Bartlett. And as Ashwarya introduced, I am also here to speak to the PE waiver issue. Now, I know you have heard a lot about this issue today, so you do understand what is at stake here. Frankly, it is our futures that do hang in the balance, because without these PE waivers, we just won't be able to apply to very many of the colleges of our dreams. And we did explain this to our school administrators, we explained this to the district. We were simply given pat answers that they would get back to us. Finally, we did receive this email saying that there would be an appeals committee. Finally, we did receive this email saying that there would be an appeals committee. However, the criteria that we do need to submit to be appealed has not been explained to us. We were told that the decisions of this appeals committee would be absolutely final. And again, these decisions will be final based on documentation that was not clearly explained to us. We are still not aware of what the district deems necessary to be given these PE waivers. In his Facebook post, Tony Sanders said that in order to receive PE waivers, students need to prove that they have already applied to these universities. I know that many of us understand that it is simply impractical to demand a sophomore or a junior approve application to a university. This is something that's done fall of senior year. We all know that this is illogical, and we did take our concerns to the district, and frankly, we felt that our voices really weren't heard. We simply asked Tony Sanders why this was happening, why it was this year that things had to change. We were wondering that maybe it could be a financial issue. We understand that it is expensive to pay for the AP classes that we need to take. Tony Sanders said that this was simply off the table, that this was in no way a financial issue, but Board Member Susan Kerr replied to one of my emails that I wrote to her, saying that she was very concerned about the financial aspect of this issue. We do understand that cutting the amount of PE waivers does save costs to the district, but what it ultimately does do, it hurts, is that it hurts the value of education in Bartlett. It hurts the value of the education that we receive at Bartlett High School. Does it hurts the value of Bartlett property. It's a direct offense to the Bartlett taxpayer because it is hurting the way that students learn. Our futures hang in the balance here, and what they're doing simply should not be accepted. We really do urge the village of Bartlett and the Bartlett taxpayers to press Tony Sanders and the district U-46 to interpret these PE waivers more loosely in a way that helps us achieve our dreams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if we didn't have speakers like these two young ladies, I would have a much less rosy outlook on the future.
I know, right? Very well done.
You're very well spoken. I wanted to suggest that we don't turn these girls away showing a, maybe a deaf ear or whatever, that perhaps a letter from you, Kevin?
Yeah.
I don't know what the rest of you might think, but just, just a letter that says, "Please look into this. We've had folks come to our meeting."
Absolutely. I can assure you that we will direct a letter to them, not a letter, but an email or a hand-delivered one, because you only have till Thursday, right? I've already been in touch with the board members. I've met with three of them one-on-one. I'm meeting with another one tomorrow night. I didn't know the timeline, so thank you for sharing that with me, but we'll do everything that we can in our power to, to push this along. So, number one is making sure we get the clarity you need in order to move forward with these applications, so we'll, we'll do whatever we can.
Yeah, but I understand that we are just so limited in, in how we can help you. Good luck.
And thank you for standing up for what you believe in. That's great. Anybody else? Right. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Standing Committee Reports. First Standing Committee Report is Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. All the items were addressed in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have this evening is Building Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have in the Standing Committee Report this evening is Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Dany.
Mr. President, it was covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. Next item we have under our Standing Committee Reports is License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Aaronz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first item is the Bike and Run Plan Advisory Committee Ordinance, and the board directed staff to make up an ordinance for a Bike Plan Advisory Committee. So, at this time, I will move to approve ordinance 2016 dash...
21?
21. An ordinance creating the Bike and Run Plan Advisory Committee.
Second. By trustee Aaronz, second by trustee Ranky. Is there any discussion? I guess the only discussion I would have is the name. I, I kind of chimed in a little bit when the board was deciding to create this, and I wanted to be more inclusive with people that use the path other than just bikers. So, bike and run sounds a little bit awkward, I don't know, but maybe biking or exercise paths or committee? I don't know. Just a question, I don't...
I'm sorry, I'm not, I can't help you. I'm not that creative.
Why don't we let them just drive?
Bike and pedestrian?
Bike and pedestrian.
That's a good idea.
Math committee? Let's see how long we can get it. Government likes to get things really, really, let's see if it...
Then we can have an acronym, and nobody will know what it means.
Bike and...
Bike and...
Maybe the committee can talk about that.
Yes.
Bike and run and walk and fall down.
They can change the name when they get going.
All right. No other discussion? I will, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Our second item is the Liquor Control Ordinance Amendment, Class B, and if this was discussed at the committee meeting, and I don't have a date, however, this changes the Class B liquor license. So, at this time, I would move to approve ordinance 2016 dash 22, an ordinance creating a Class B, sorry, the creation of a Class B liquor license.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Aaronz, second by trustee Dany. Is there any discussion? Chairman, now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On that concludes the License and Ordinance Committee, which was promised to me to be a very inactive committee, so I will give it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Aaronz. Next item we have in our Standing Committee Reports this evening is the Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item on Standing Committee Reports is Public Works Committee Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we, too, have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. That concludes our Standing Committee Reports this evening. We have a couple of items under New Business, and the first one is to appoint committee members for the Bike and Run Plan Advisory Committee. What would that be? V-R-P-A-C. Bike and Run Plan Advisory Committee Appointments. So, it is my intention to appoint the following people on the Bike and Run Plan Committee with the following terms. Trustee Cammer, Cammer, to a one-year term. Bruce Hendricks, I appoint Bruce to a two-year term. Dan Palmer, I appoint Dan to a two-year term. And Terry Witt, I appoint Terry to a three-year term. And if we're all in agreement to that, oh, and we have Joe Stacy. I appoint Joe Stacy to a three-year term. So, if there's...
There needs to be a motion to consent to those appointments for the, just ordinance you just passed.
Intend a motion to consent to those appointments.
Moved.
Second. By trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Abstain.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
The motion carries, and thank you all, if you're here, for spending some time and helping our community. I'm sure Terry has, it's been a long time coming. I think he's been talking about it at the podium for, for many, actually, years now, so, well done. I think that's going to be an exciting committee and looking forward to seeing what they'll do with it. Now Chairman Cammer has to actually buy a bike.
I've got bikes. What are you talking about?
We entered, we actually created a new liquor license under License and Ordinance Committee with that, I'm not sure I'm going to enunciate this right, but Piatazza's Class B liquor license request is under our new business this evening, and I would entertain a motion... Okay, so if there's no, no issues, I intend to deliver that liquor license to Piatazza's Class B liquor license. All the license, all the insurance and everything was already checked, so...
I don't have any objection. I would note that the social security number, driver's license number of the applicant's been distributed, so it's not the first time I've seen this either, so we're asking these folks to trust us.
I have a question for Mr. Klonsinski. When they filled out this application, do they have any intention on having video gaming?
I know that they have the best pizza in the world, and according to Mr. Piatazza, and he has not ever mentioned video gaming. He just wants to get open. He's taken a spot that had an existing pizza place, if you know the, in the Army Trail Road place where Papa Savarios was. He's anxious to get open, but he didn't mention anything about video gaming.
And if he wanted to do video gaming, what would be the process for him?
He would just apply for a video gaming license, and then he could apply, once he gets that, then he would apply it to the state and, and get that, because he does have, he will have a valid liquor license.
Would it come before this board again?
No. Just in the context of, that he would have, we've noted to you, but he doesn't have, it's not a special use or anything, because he, because that place had the special use assigned to it already.
Thank you, Jim. The video gaming thing is, we've talked about that a few times, trying to enact different ways to control that. They aren't in place now, so as soon as this is enacted, that's his license.
Is that in the, that one shopping center there, or is it across the street?
It's in the shopping center where, yeah, O'Hare's Pub is right by next, yeah. That's where it's at. I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head. The old sheep, yeah. Savarios was there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The old sheep and the fiddle.
Any other new business this evening? Chairman, now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll be moving right into the continuance of our village, our committee of the whole meeting.
Moved.
Second by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Aaronz. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?